Thank you so much to the staff who are on the phone, who are helping organize and manage this meeting. This is a meeting of the Santa Monica Social Services Commission. Before I begin, I just have a few announcements to make. Bear with me. Captions are going to be provided to enable closed captions. Click on the closed caption icon CC at the bottom of the screen. Also, ASL interpretation is going to be offered. And simultaneous interpretation into Spanish. To access the Spanish channel, click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen and select your preferred language channel, English or Spanish.
Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos a la reunión de la comisión. Vamos a tener habilitado el sistema o la función de los subtítulos que aparecerán automáticamente. También tendremos interpretación en idioma de señas e interpretación en el idioma español. Para acceder al sistema de interpretación en español, deben presionar en el globo que dice que tiene forma de globoterráqueo. Hacer clic ahí, escoger el canal en español y ya estaremos preparados para brindar la interpretación en ese canal a los que la necesiten. Gracias.
Thank you so much. And so at this point, I think everyone who's on the phone has to go to that interpretation globe and click either English or Spanish. Can everyone hear me still? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Let me just make sure that I've covered everything. I just want to remind everyone that since simultaneous interpretation is provided, we would appreciate it if everyone spoke slowly and clearly. So I just want to now do a roll call for those from the City of Santa Monica Social Services Commission who are participating. Commissioner Aiken.
Here.
Commissioner Amber. Commissioner Cagle.
Here.
Commissioner Mandel.
Here.
Commissioner Parent.
Here.
Commissioner Sloan.
Here.
Vice Chair Stedstapp.
Hello.
Chair Wexler, that's me. So welcome, everyone. We have several things to cover, but I think why most of you are here tonight is to take part of part two of a two-part presentation by City of Santa Monica staff on the City of Santa Monica's upcoming Human Services Grants Program draft request for proposals or RFP for fiscal years 2023 to 2027. The staff presentation will be by Aliya Bhutar and Nicole Liner. Should have asked in advance the right way to pronounce that name.
That's okay, Chair Person Wexler. Nicole Liner Jagamian and then I'm Aliya Bhutar.
Aliya Bhutar, Nicole Liner Jagamian. Both of them are our staff at the Housing and Human Services Division for the city. Thank you for that correction. Very good. Well, why don't we start with a presentation? After that, we'll take any kind of public comment that might be wanting to be provided by people attending from the community and then the commissioners can ask any questions they have. Many of you, I believe, have an attachment that is probably going to be shared this evening. But that goes through the issues that are going to be covered. So please, please start.
Yes. So we'll share the PowerPoint on the screen and then also along with the agenda posting was an attachment and we'll reference it in the presentation and where you can find it. I see the presentation is up. So thank you for that introduction. As I said, my name's Aliya Bhutar. Good evening. I'm a senior analyst in the Housing and Human Services Division. And we're here tonight to present on the outcomes portion of the upcoming request for proposal or RFP for the next Human Services Grants Program funding cycle. In February, our colleagues presented on the RFP eligibility and scoring criteria. For more information on these components of the RFP, please refer to the video recording that's available on the Social Services Commission website at www.smgov.net/SSC. So in tonight's presentation, we will provide an overview of how the proposed outcomes were developed and share these outcomes in greater detail. We will be asking for community input on the proposed impact areas and goals. We will then review the next steps and timeline for this RFP, including how members of the public can learn more about this draft RFP and provide input on the key components that will be presented tonight. The agenda packet with relevant materials to reference can be found at that same website, www.smgov.net/SSC. As mentioned earlier, we ask that you please hold any questions or comments until the end of the presentation. So I'll now discuss the role outcomes play in the Human Services Grants Program, how outcomes fit with the other components of the RFP, and then provide an overview of how the proposed outcomes for the upcoming RFP were developed. I will then hand the presentation to my colleague Nicole to review the proposed outcomes in detail. At the foundation of the Human Services Grants Program is understanding the impact that programs have on the community and in the lives of participants. Outcomes are a key tool in assessing this impact. Outcomes data also inform program planning and help identify where things are working, where they are not, and support data-driven decision-making. Outcomes also serve as a way to ensure that the goals and indicators programs select measure change towards identified community priorities and that programming is addressing the most important needs of the community. Given the essential role that outcomes play in the grants program, Housing and Human Services Division staff viewed the release of the new RFP as a key opportunity to reimagine and strengthen the grants program outcomes so that they are more standardized, incorporate current research, and most importantly, reflect community needs. To support these efforts, an external expert was brought on to develop and implement a community-driven process for developing these new outcomes. Before sharing an overview of this community engagement process, I'll provide some context on how outcomes fit with the other components of the RFP. So as discussed at the February presentation, outcomes are one piece of the RFP. In the RFP, applicants are required to submit a program plan which contains outcomes along with the program summary, which describes the target population and the services to be provided. The outcomes on their own assess the impact the applicants hope to achieve as a result of their programs. They're intended to apply broadly across populations and types of services. It is within the program summary that applicants will describe specific populations they intend to serve. For example, undocumented individuals, seniors, people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness, as well as specific types of services, for example, legal services, case management, substance use, and others. I'll now share more information about the community engagement process. So from May to October 2019, a series of sessions were held to get community input and feedback. Over 10,000 individuals were invited through open invitations via public announcements on social media, as well as through direct in-person outreach. Specifically, tables were set up at four farmers markets, a Twilight on the Pier concert, and at two Meet Me at Reed Park events. A total of 27 community and stakeholder workshops and two town halls were held and presentations were given to five commissions. Through these efforts, more than 350 people participated in these meetings, including executive directors, program participants, the general public, service providers, and community partners. In addition, two online surveys in English and Spanish were conducted with over 150 survey responses collected. The central question that guided all these sessions was, what does an effective human services system in Santa Monica look like to you? The feedback from these sessions was analyzed and researched from Rand, the Youth Wellbeing Report Card, and other sources was incorporated to develop new standardized outcomes. During the discussion, the themes that arose focused on community needs and the effectiveness of programs. As such, outcomes were framed around program impact, not specific populations or services. With the COVID-19 pandemic, staff have also reviewed these outcomes to ensure they continue to be reflective of current community needs and support economic recovery. I'll now hand the presentation to my colleague Nicole to present these outcomes in more detail.
Thanks, Aliya. Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole Liner Jagamian and I'm an analyst in the Housing and Human Services Division. Now that we've walked through the outcomes development and community engagement process, we're going to review the proposed outcomes. Using the results of the community engagement process, Housing and Human Services staff identified three overarching community impact areas that reflect the priorities emphasized by Santa Monica residents. We are recommending that the Human Services Grants Program, RFP, focus on these three impact areas to encourage agencies that meet these three priorities to apply. The first community impact area is lifelong learning, which focuses on programs that ensure Santa Monica residents of all ages have access to and succeed in education and training. The second area is stability, which includes programs that support residents in becoming socially and economically secure. And the third impact area is health and wellness, which focuses on residents' physical, mental, and emotional health and wellbeing. Under each of these areas, we have outlined a series of goals which describe the big picture outcomes that programs will aim to achieve. You will see that these goals are intentionally broad and applicable to a wide range of programs that serve a variety of people. They are not intended to prescribe a specific population or service type. Rather, they are meant to describe a service's impact. On the following slides, I will discuss these goals in more detail. The first community impact area of lifelong learning is really focused on programs that facilitate access to high-quality education and training for residents of all ages. We are proposing the programs that support lifelong learning measure progress towards at least one of the following goals: improving childcare and early learning access for families, including resources like tuition assistance; improving the school experience, including factors like attendance, academic performance, and access to school-based mental health services; improving key academic transitions from pre-k through college, for example, from elementary school to middle school; and increasing access to education among adults and throughout the community. The second community impact area of stability is a broad category intended to capture a variety of needs that impact individuals and households' social and economic stability. We are proposing that stability programs focused on housing measure progress towards increasing the number of vulnerable households who receive appropriate supports to maintain stable, quality housing, such as legal services that prevent eviction and/or expanding access to interim and permanent housing solutions. We are also recommending that other stability programs measure progress towards increasing economic wellbeing, such as through maintaining high-quality employment, increasing parent and caregiver support, such as improving caregiver-child relationships, and/or increasing access to affordable transportation, for example, through participation in a transit program. Finally, the third community impact area of health and wellness is focused on physical, mental, and emotional health and wellbeing. We are proposing that programs focused on health and wellness measure progress towards at least one of the following goals: improving behavioral health, including mental health and/or substance use; improving physical health; improving food security, such as access to affordable, healthy food; and/or improving connections between residents and their community, which can include pro-social interpersonal interactions, engagement in community events, and connectivity through technology. Now I recommend looking at Attachment A, which depicts the community impact areas and goals we just introduced. This attachment also includes sample indicators, which programs can use to measure progress towards their goals. I do just want to emphasize that this is a sample list that currently only has a few indicators for each goal and will continue to be built out as we finalize the RFP. This list is also not meant to be exhaustive because agencies have the option to propose their own indicators as well. Looking at the attachment, we are recommending that agencies select one or more community impact area on which their program is focused. They can select from lifelong learning, stability, and/or health and wellness. They then identify one or more goal associated with each impact area. They must select from the goals listed on Attachment A and can select as many impact areas and goals from this list as is appropriate for their program. For example, a program that provides substance use services could select health and wellness as their impact area and then improve behavioral health as their goal. And then if that program also offers housing services, they could select stability as a second impact area and then an appropriate housing goal. Once agencies choose their impact areas and goals, they will then select or propose outcome indicators for each goal. Indicators will measure the program's impact and should be specific, measurable, and time-bound. Having broader community impact areas and goals and then more specific outcome indicators supports some standardization across the grants program while also highlighting the unique nature of each agency. We also want this outcomes assessment process to complement agencies' existing efforts. Therefore, we encourage applicants to use pre-established indicators and data collection methods if possible. Agencies awarded funding will also have the opportunity to update their indicators annually as needed. So now let's see how this outcome assessment process can work in practice by walking through what it might look like when we review an application. So let's say that there's an agency that operates a food pantry and their goal is to provide food to individuals and households who are experiencing food insecurity. The agency might select health and wellness as their impact area. They might then review the different goals listed under that area and select improved food security as the goal that best reflects the aim of their program. And just as a reminder, the agency must select from the goals on this list and they can select as many goals as they would like. So once the agency identifies their goal of improved food security, they will then select from the sample indicators provided by the city or propose their own. So for this food pantry program, the agency might decide that the sample indicators, number of pounds of food distributed to the community and number of meals served are a good fit. They might then reframe these indicators to make them specific to their program and to be measurable over a defined period of time. Their indicators could be distribute 1 million pounds of food to the community annually and provide 700,000 meals to participants annually. The agency will report on these outcome indicators at mid-year and at year-end. The agency will also have the opportunity to revisit and adjust their indicators each year as appropriate. By following this example of a food pantry program, we can see how other programs that distribute food can also align with the goal of improved food security. This goal can work for programs that deliver food to homebound seniors or in congregate settings. It can also work for programs that feed different populations from older adults to families to households with individuals who are both documented and undocumented. The goal of improved food security is important to programs that facilitate food access for any population. And the indicators are also relevant and trackable for any program with this goal. As a reminder, as part of their applications, agencies will be scored on how well their indicators will advance the goals. The outcome section of the application is really focused on what programs aim to achieve and the feasibility of those objectives. The specific services that a program offers and to whom will be described in detail in their program plan, which will get into the specifics of how they will achieve their goals. So that summarizes staff's proposed outcomes and assessment process. With that, I'll pass it back to Aliya to discuss next steps and questions.
All right. Thank you, Nicole. Over the next several months, we will continue to finalize the RFP, seeking input and feedback from the community. The community input process will close on May 2nd, allowing us time to incorporate feedback and present the RFP to City Council this summer and publish it in the fall. The RFP will be open for three months and the review panel will have a month to review the applications and make award recommendations. These recommendations will be presented to City Council in the spring of 2023 and formal awards will be made in June 2023 with the new grant cycle beginning in July. The Social Services Commission has and will continue to play a role in finalizing the RFP by providing a platform to discuss specific components of the RFP, helping to determine the process for selecting panelists and providing recommendations to council. We also wanted to note that with the consolidation of commissions, as of July 1st, the Social Services Commission will be a different commission. Our intent is to continue to be engaged with this body as it changes over time, as the SSC or a future Human Services Commission. At the conclusion of this presentation, staff is available to answer any questions and we have a couple of questions we're specifically seeking your feedback on. So our first question is, do the community impact areas of lifelong learning, stability, and health and wellness capture the Santa Monica community's key priorities at a high level? And second, will the goal sufficiently assess progress towards the impact areas? While we're specifically seeking your input on these questions, we also welcome general feedback on anything presented tonight. And so if you have additional comments after tonight, feedback and questions can be submitted by email or by written comment to the addresses listed here. As mentioned earlier, the community input process will be open until May 2nd. The link to the draft RFP documents and frequently asked questions that arise during development of the 23 to 27 HSGP RFP, including those that came up at the last Social Service Commission meeting, as well as the link to the recordings of tonight's and last month's presentations are listed on the slide as well. With that, we thank you for your time and we'll go back to the slide with our couple of questions on it and I will pass it back to Chair Wexler.
Well, thank you so much to both of you. Why don't we start if there's any public comment? Okay, I don't see any hands or anyone wishing to speak from the public. So then why don't we move ahead with allowing each of the commissioners to ask questions and let us go through the list alphabetically. If you don't have any questions, you can just pass it on to the next member.
Chair.
I do have one question or statement. Are you asking somebody to answer like number one or two right here to input? Or is this something you already had planned?
You're asking me? No, we don't have anything planned. If you have any public comment, we encourage you to, or questions, you can make them now before the commissioners do.
On the goals.
Okay, let me just say your name and which organization you're from because we're doing this virtually.
Absolutely. I'm with the Salvation Army in Santa Monica, the Social Service Office on Fourth Street, not the First Door. Two different places and we have on 11th Street. So with the goals.
And your name is?
And my name is James Fleming.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm the administrator there and I was just looking at your goals and something I don't see in there and I'm curious. I'm just putting my input in because it asks for questions. Will the goals provide sufficiently assessed progress towards community impact areas? One of my goals that I really want to see is where the gaps are, that when we're collecting data, that we're not just showing what we do, but where the gaps are and what we don't do. I feel like that that should be part of the process of collecting stuff because there's things we aren't doing, but then we're casually asking them during a meeting or something. But when you're out there, we should already have a list of things, like for instance, for an outreach team or a food pantry, they should be collecting their shower program, like what are the things we are lacking so that they can be recorded and then given as statistics to say, hey, this is a huge gap here. We need to focus on that for the next grant process or something. That's just my, that was just one of my inputs. So thanks.
Thank you so much. Any comment from city staff on this?
Sure. Yeah. So the purpose of the outcomes assessment is really to see if the programs are achieving their intended impacts for participants. But collecting feedback from participants in the program is another component of the RFP. And so it is a component of the program evaluation in the RFP. So we strongly encourage applicants to solicit participant feedback on the quality and satisfaction of the services provided. So included in that would be, are there gaps in, you know, the services they are receiving? How can they be improved? Things like that. And we encourage the applicants to continuously incorporate that participant feedback into the program design. So that would be the place where something like that is captured. And thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And anybody else on the phone from the phone has a question or comment? Okay, so we'll go through the commissioners present. Commissioner Aiken, do you have any questions or comments?
I'll pass it this time. Thanks.
Commissioner Cagle.
Sorry, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mandel.
Not right now. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Parent.
No questions.
Commissioner Sloan.
So I do have a question regarding the goals under stability. It talks about vulnerable households. Is there a definition of vulnerable households? What that means?
So we don't have a specific definition as we don't want to box ourselves in too much. So in some of the ways that we've looked at this is really with going back to our last meeting from February, that Santa Monica program participant definition. And that is in the attachments from that meeting and those criteria that fall in the different areas of students, families, people experiencing homelessness. And so we would really look back to that for our definition for vulnerable populations.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Stedstapp.
I don't have a specific question and discussion questions more on the the community impact area goals and sample indicators. Is that okay to ask?
Yeah, definitely.
All right. On lifelong, first off, I love, I love the template. It's pretty easy to understand and I can see a lot of organizations being able to pick and choose what they're wanting to focus on. On lifelong learning, is there, I don't see anything in terms of entrepreneurship, in terms of starting new business. Did I miss that?
So there isn't a business, I mean, so there's somewhere around adult and community education in column E. There isn't like employment goals and then new business goals in that way. We have employment indicators and goals under stability. And so entrepreneurship could potentially fit under increased economic wellbeing. I think it would depend on the type of entrepreneur program. So if there's a specific type of program you have in mind, I'm happy to dig into that a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious in terms of, because I know that there are some people that go right out of high school and they start a business. Some people leave college and they start a business. It would be, and with cradle to career, helping students ideally get a head start in our education process. It would be interesting if we're able to track how many people right out of high school that live in Santa Monica group in Santa Monica started a business, whether they failed or not, they started, they took the initiative and started it. Same would be right out of college, like how many people are jumping out of SMU and starting a business? And more importantly, also later in life, how many people went to Santa Monica College to kickstart their design career as like a web designer? So I would just, I think if we're talking about lifelong learning, I'm very curious because that is, that's one thing I don't see tracked, but that's all I got.
Yeah. So I'll just say, I do think the programs that you mentioned could probably fall under lifelong learning and stability. They would be a good fit for increasing adult education, but they would also be a good fit for increasing economic wellbeing, which would be under stability because of the goal of the program that they're participating in is to, you know, increase their economic wellbeing. Ultimately, that's where it would fit. But if they're also getting an educational component out of it, then it could also go in lifelong learning and they can, they can select both. It's just whatever is most appropriate for the program. And I'll also pass it to Ali to see if you have anything to add to that.
And I'll just say with what Nicole is saying, that that's where the program would have the flexibility within the indicators, that they could have some of those specific ones that you mentioned that then feed up into the goals or impact area.
And one other final question, a lot of these would be self-reported in terms of you, you, you circle one and then you're able, then you're self-report. So with grantees that are able, the grantees are the ones that are like, oh, we, like for instance, I know we've struggled with this. number of successful eviction for the preventions or those keeping people in their homes. I, when I've had conversations with others with city staff and housing, it's, it's really difficult to identify. We're very, we're, once you're in, once you're homeless, we're pretty good at getting you services if you know who you are. But identifying the people who are about to fall into homelessness, we, is really, really difficult to see. So we'd be relying on, not staff, but we're relying on the RFP winner to, to provide that data.
So I'll, I think I hear two separate points with it. So one part I'll address with, if someone is a grantee, that we have a monitoring process where we would look through our monitoring process for the documentation or ask how an outcome is documented. In the RFP process, so that's one point I hear. And then the second point is in the evaluation process in the RFP and in the selection is how do we know if what that person is putting in their application, if that's just self-report? And so with that, we're also looking to the Social Service Commission to provide some input on the review panel itself and the outcomes themselves will also be scored more holistically than just past performance.
And I will say too, if you have recommendations about indicators that feel more meaningful or more appropriate to collect, we're also here to collect that feedback too. So please feel free to share.
And Chair, I just have one last thing. We have like 37 people on this. I know we have one hand raised by AE, but 37 people, please, please raise your hand and comment. This is your opportunity.
Okay, I'm going, I do see two hands raised, but I think for, given the process we're, we're going through now, I'm going to just, as the last commissioner to ask questions or make comments, I'll do that. And then we'll come to the two public questions. So I do have just a general comment related to the presentation, which was, it's very thoughtful. And I appreciate that we're looking at all of the questions relating to the Human Services Grant Program strategically for the purpose of this meeting and the last one. But it's really impossible to know whether you're on the right track if you don't include dollars because it's hard to know that you're going to, whether you're going to achieve the goals or that we're going to serve the community. If if, if we don't know how much money we're able to invest in these programs. We received four letters related to, or three letters related to early childhood education in our community prior to our meeting tonight, written comment. And all of them spoke about the increasing costs of providing early childhood education of the waiting lists that exist for children who have financial constraints and need placement in early childhood. But the city grants don't provide enough dollars to our providers to, to serve all the children who, who need places. So I'm not sure that we're going to achieve goals that we've set out for ourselves relating, relating to lifelong learning if we don't increase the amount of money available for early childhood. So I just feel this whole presentation, as well as the one last week, it's like important. Great to have, you know, the structure and know that we're asking the right questions, but we're never going to achieve our goals if we don't add more money to the budget for the Human Services Grant Program. And I, I feel it's a very important point that needs to be brought back as you're considering how you move forward with this RFP process. Because clearly, we've, those of us who have been on the commission for multiple years have been listening for every commission meeting we've had about the inadequate services as it relates to homelessness and behavioral health and so many other areas. And none of those will be changing. We're not going to achieve our goals. We're not going to have the community impact that's desirable unless we are able to devote more resources to, to this whole range, to the, to the three areas you've defined. And I think that they're perfectly, perfectly suitable. So I just feel like it's kind of an intellectual conversation we're having that has very little meaning unless we're talking about putting more dollars against all of this. And I agree with the three written comments that were provided by early childhood providers that unless the city really understands how costs have gone up, how many children are not being served. And, you know, we're not, we're not going to achieve the goals. I don't know if the two presenters can respond to these comments. I'm not necessarily expecting you to. I'm just trying to make, make a point very strongly.
And we appreciate those comments, Chair Wexler, and they echo what you shared at the February meeting as well. And so we, we definitely hear you on that and that's something that the commission could submit as a recommendation to council in terms of the funding allocation for the program. And in terms of our, this, what we presented tonight and last month, it's, it's with the funding that we do have, but that's, we appreciate your point.
Well, I can only say that, let's assume that the budget is the same. I think we have every reason to assume that's a possible outcome, that it's the same budget for the last, for the, you know, going forward as you've had for the last four years or whatever. We're going to not be achieving our goals. We're going to be achieving our goals far less than we have because we all know that costs have gone up, certainly in terms of the cost of staffing, are the nonprofit programs and, and really on every, on every component. So, so I just feel like we, we can answer that question in advance. We will not achieve our goals and we will not have the impact if we don't increase, increase the budget. It's just not any more complicated than that. So along those same lines, we haven't talked about any kind of guidelines in terms of dollars for the applicants. It wasn't, I don't think referred to in last, the last week, last presentation we had or in this. I mean, that's very relevant. How, how much do applicants know they can ask for? I mean, like, are there any guidelines in either of these sections, those provided last time or this time, about what the, what the amount is that applicants can propose?
So as you said, we can assume that the total funding amount will be similar as previous years and we don't have a limit. We didn't want to segment it out in that way and we'll be really looking to the review panel for those recommendations and input.
Well, how, just, just trying to understand the practicality of that. So let's say I'm a homeless service provider and I have a proposal for a million dollars to provide, to respond to the questions relating to stability and, you know, a whole range of services. And there's another homeless service provider and they're proposing, you know, different services, similar services, but theirs is for $500,000. How does the amount that someone is saying they need to deliver services, where, where does that fit into how these proposals are going to be ranked or reviewed? Is that in the, was that in the last presentation last year, last time? I don't remember that being mentioned. I mean, dollars have to play a role in determining who gets awarded contracts.
So that's something that we would really look to this commission on and look to the review panel for, for recommendations for how to select and also look within that within the budget and the program plan of how all those pieces fit together with the dollar amount and also the proposed services along with the outcomes. Yeah.
If that's, if that's the case, then I think this has to be far more explicit when you present it to city council. Because I'm really glad I asked the question because I view it as being the heart of the question of this whole process. You know, how much is, how many people are going to be awarded grants? How much will be awarded per grantee? How will that then, as they achieve your, your goals and the impact that you're seeking? So, so I, I don't know how you present the RFP to the city council without addressing this very important question about review and selection as it relates to the amount of dollars that each proposal requests. I mean, I might, I may think that the one, that the, the homeless services provider who proposed a million dollars has far greater quality, likely to achieve their goals, likely to serve the community better, has a history of, of experience with the community, good relationships with city staff, all the other things that go into deciding whether, you know, a grantee is, is the right one. But, but their proposal is very expensive. And I could possibly get something else for far cheaper. How do I? I mean, that's just going to be a subjective thing. If it is, if that's what it is, is a subjective decision based upon the review process. I just think that has to be brought out more clearly in bringing this to city council.
We have that noted and that's something that we'll take into consideration as we finalize the RFP.
Okay.
I'll also note too, that agencies can be funded partially if we don't have enough funds to fund them fully. And so they won't be excluded because they've asked for more money than the grants program has or, you know, something like that. We will consider a partial funding as well.
So if they got partial funding, then they would have to probably revise their proposal, right? Because you can't necessarily accomplish with a portion of the dollars you've requested the same outcomes or achieve the same goals as with the full amount, right? So then that would assume that you'd have to have a, somebody resubmit or somehow take that into account as part of the process, right?
Potentially. And I will also add that the agencies, we're, we're one of usually multiple funding sources that are funding agencies and programs, not always, but often. And so I just want to clarify too, that they may have other funds that they can use to supplement to.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess, sorry to really hammer this so much, but I guess somewhere there needs to be the discussion question of, you know, how do you achieve goals and outcomes given the increase in costs and increase in need in so many different areas that you're, we're trying to address with a static budget. I, I just feel like that's a very basic part of this exercise that has not been focused on, that's not been clearly addressed. I mean, it hasn't been transparently asked.
We have that noted, Chair Wexler, and that's something that we'll keep in mind as we finalize the RFP.
Okay, I think you're implying I've made that point.
No, we appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay. I'll go through the three people whose hands are raised and then if any commissioners have any more comments or questions given conversation, we can make sure that those questions are asked. So whoever is AE, if you can identify, please.
Thank you. My name's Alex Elliott. I'm the chair of the Disabilities Commission. Thanks for having this presentation. Just around data collection, I'd be curious how RFP applicants are going to apply disability demographic data. I work in outcomes for behavioral health and that's a challenge. So I just want to, I'm curious about how they measure that they're reaching those folks. So that's just one of the most challenging disability demographics to capture and we're also often missing from the data. So that's something I'd want to the behavioral health side, just some data sources you might want to tap into are full-service partnership data, maybe MHSA data, because it's a challenge for behavioral health providers to do double data entry or double data collection. And there, there's, I know there's some data they're collecting that matches up to those indicators. And, and just some of the, the data is a little heavy on the, the self-report measures and a little light on the network adequacy, because sometimes it's, it's the system, not the individual, why, why outcomes aren't being met. Thank you and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any, any response to that or should we go on to the next question?
We have that noted and thank you, Alex, for that comment.
Okay, the next person, it says Hajar on there.
Yes, hi. My name is Hajar and I'm a Santa Monica resident and business owner and a community advocate. Some of my questions, the chair hammered them in, and so I greatly appreciate that. But a couple of other questions I had were, what percentage of the RFP winners are repeat winners? What percentage are actually new, you know, new businesses, new nonprofits? And is there a commitment and an intention to bring in true community-based programming through the RFP winners? Like for the people, by the people?
So, yeah, so we won't know who applies or who's ordered. We'll go through the review process. And so within that, with the eligibility criteria that was presented at last month's meeting, we would welcome innovative proposals or proposals for new agencies within those guidelines and parameters.
Okay, thank you so much. Noel Lopez Haven? If you can just identify which organization you're with.
That's funny. Hi, everybody. My name is Noel Lopez. I'm the deputy director of Haven Neighbor Services. Yeah, did you hear me?
I did, but I misidentified you at the, I thought your name was hyphenated.
Imagine that was my last name? Oh, geez. Well, hello, everybody. I just wanted to say, my name is Noel Lopez. I'm the deputy director at Haven Neighbor Services. We are the leading financial capability and housing agency here in, in the city of Los Angeles. Recently, we're planning a program at Virginia Avenue Park that's located on Cloverfield Boulevard and Pico Boulevard. We're doing a program around there around financial capability work and financial empowerment. We conducted a needs assessment there and the things that we found out is that the, the, the community in that specific area, they were super interested around credit counseling, debt reduction, identity debt recovery assistance. We also do foreclosure prevention type of work and pre-purchase counseling. These are the type of things that we were ending up doing in terms of our needs assessment. We're actually going to start planning this program on April 6. One of my questions in, in this is that Haven is super, Haven Neighbor Services, we're super interested in to start expanding our services into the Santa Monica area because we're already in partnership with the Latino Resource Organization in Venice. My question is, in submitting the proposal, is it possible? Because one of the things that a lot of the community members were requesting was resources around cash assistance. Is this something that we're able to promote and is that something that we're able to do in this proposal?
So within the proposal, that would, there's nothing in it within the eligibility guidelines that were presented last month or within this month that would prohibit that. And we welcome proposals for new types of services, innovative services. And so if you see your, I definitely see that within the outcomes that were presented tonight. And so that would be something you can definitely submit.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, we're definitely going to move forward and pursuing this because I think this just aligns so well with our mission and we definitely want to bring in free tax preparation services to Santa Monica. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from? Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay. Well, then. Is there anything more that city staff want to share on this? If not, we really appreciate your taking the time and all the other members of the community who have participated. What is the timing you suggested our writing a letter or comments to the city council? What would the timing be? For our commission to provide a letter to. To the council regarding the RFP. And I guess before I ask that. Is are we going to see a revised version of the RFP, or is it going to basically? Be presented as as you presented it to us?
So we'll continue to update the website with additional materials. We also have the public input period open through May 2. So we'll be looking for written comments during that time. We'll also be going to council in the summer to share the proposed RFP and also. Gather feedback at that time before finalizing it. So with that, updated materials will be posted on the website. Thank you, Nicole. So that's the the first part of seeing another version of it. The second part in terms of timing of when to write a letter to council or a recommendation. That would be no earlier than July. In terms of the budget adoption cycle, so probably later in the summer would be a good timing for that.
Well, given, as you mentioned, the the structure and composition of this commission changing at the end of June. We kind of raises questions about. How we do that. But. It seems that the that the city council's decision about changing the composition of this commission and your RFP timeline are. Not quite aligned. But. I I know that has nothing to do with anything the two of you have done, so.
Yeah, I saw Commissioner Parent's hand up. So but to to finish your question, that is something I on that, that's a good point with the commission changing, so. It may be. Good to get that letter done now.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Okay, that's helpful. And Commissioner Parent.
You're you're muted.
Yeah. Still muted.
I know. I'll get used to this at some point, third or fourth year. The, sorry if I missed this in the previous meeting or this meeting, but could you say more about the composition? And how the review panel, how big, who's going to be on it, who's going to make the appointments to it, to about that?
Sure, yeah. So we'll be actually coming to the new Human Services Commission to discuss options for their role in identifying panelists. But we do envision that panelists will be a really balanced mix of local and national subject matter experts, local stakeholders. People that really reflect the diversity of the community and the different programs being funded.
Size of it, any idea?
I mean, I think it would be the appropriate number to have a mix of of representation from those different groups.
That could that could get you in big trouble fast, but.
I mean, we would also be looking at the at the commission, the the new commission to to make recommendations around that as well.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. If no one else has anything more to add, so much, so appreciate. All the work that's gone into this. And oh, excuse me, Commissioner Kegel.
Just briefly, I just wanted to follow up on something that was mentioned earlier. What? What percentage of the grant applicants are you funding in full as opposed to funding partially? Are are most of your grants a a full, are you fully funding what they're asking for, or are most of them getting part of what they're asking for?
So we don't have that information on hand for the grant for the this current grantee cycle. But that's something that we can prepare and include in the FAQ doc that's posted on the Human Services website after this meeting.
And along with it, do you also know, like, how many agencies are are not getting any grants awarded? Would that also be something you'd have to look into?
So that was responded to. That was a question actually that came up last month, so that was responded to in the FAQ doc that'll be on there. But there were two programs that were not funded. Is that correct, Alia? Just confirming.
I believe so. And for this upcoming. Cycle, we'll we'll see what the mix of applications are. And what the the review panels recommendations are with that.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I think the commissioners will stay on. Anybody else who wants to stay on for the rest of our meeting? But this is the end of the community meeting portion of our. Of tonight's meeting. But commissioners will stay on to continue our commission meeting.
And everyone's welcome to.
That's true. Anyone is welcome to stay. Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks, everyone who's still on the phone. Going back to our agenda for tonight. We are. Just going to go through the different ad hoc committees to the extent that there's any new report. We did have our meeting. Two weeks ago, another special meeting, so I don't know that we have that much to follow up on. I think it's worth maybe hearing something from the Ad Hoc Committee on Behavioral Health Services, just as sort of a wrap up. Of the Providence St. John's. Presentation that was made. At the city council meeting, the discussion that that prompted relating to increasing the community benefits, particularly the dollar amount. For the community, for the Behavioral Health Center that we recommended, and also the discussion about the psych beds. And. And anything else that we wanted to just follow up on. That's, I guess, both relevant to the Ad Hoc Committee on Behavioral Health. And the Ad Hoc Committee on. Social Service Community Benefits and Development Agreements. So do any of those ad hoc members want to say anything?
I can, I can jump on Cindy. It looks like you you want to speak.
Well, we we haven't had an ad hoc meeting outside of this. You know, I did listen to most of that city council meeting where they discussed it, and the CEO of Providence St. John was on there, so. So I'm not sure, what did you, did you want to talk about the outcome of that meeting, or because we don't have anything to report on behalf of the ad hoc today?
Okay, I I thought maybe you did have some thoughts regarding the outcome of the city council decision regarding. The Providence St. John's Development Agreement, which was basically accepted as proposed. I I guess there were some modest changes made based on. Different community members related to some of the ancillary benefits, but. It does seem that there is. Some some momentum behind the idea of moving ahead with the. With this Behavioral Health Center and some interest beyond Providence St. John's with some of the other healthcare providers in the city. And I believe that the city council is actively looking at a. At a location for this Behavioral Health Center. So. It all feels like it's following up on the sorts of issues that we've been concerned about for many months. If there's nothing to report or say, we can move on to another subject.
Brian, Brian and I attended a meeting. I I did, we did talk about this at the last meeting, but there was. A meeting that we attended previous to last meeting where they talked about. RFP that's going to be going out for a feasibility study for the Behavioral Health Center. It's my understanding there's a few different, a couple of different city properties, maybe three or four or five that they're going to be considering. Once they, once that study goes gets underway, so. Brian, was there anything you had to add to that based on that meeting we had with Maggie like three, four weeks ago?
No, I just was going to thank Bill for reading the letter. And though I'm disappointed we didn't get 20 million. The several council members were asking Providence St. John's. Questions directly from our list of requests. So that was kind of fun to see, but I I would have preferred the extra 10 million, but it was still a big win.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Parent for doing that.
You're welcome. I, well, since suddenly that it came here. My sense is that the commission's work nudged the city. It nudged Providence St. John's. And put a spotlight on the the need for psych beds and the need for Behavioral Health Center that would include such services. And the idea, you know, that, you know. A year ago, there weren't the kinds of discussions between the Department of Mental Health and the different hospitals and city staff and others. Toward something nearly as concrete as as what's emerged, and I think that. There are, there are many others, but going back to 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 Stacy Dogle and and Nancy Coleman. And on to to Brian and Cindy's leadership and. And by the way, all of those people bring real different professional and personal experiences to this discussion. And the persistence of that over seven years and the conversation is happening now. I think we nudged that along, and I think that's what that's what commissions. Do at their best, you know, we don't make the decisions, we don't decide how much money, but we can put a spotlight on things and. I think we put a spotlight on that and even, you know, and and somewhere down the line. There's going to be, you know, a a lot more money, you know, whether it's county or federal money coming in. But this train has started down the tracks, and this train was not going down the track. It's it's on. A year ago, six months ago, that I that I could see. So I I feel. I feel good about the nudging that that we did, and I think we 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 helped put a little wind in the sails of 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 an actual Behavioral Health Center. With the services we're talking about. So feel good about it.
Well, I think you've all done a great job in pushing this forward, so I'm very grateful.
I was just going to add, I appreciated how they they talked about how the CEOs of all the different major, you know, LA-based hospital systems are getting together and talking about that issue. So that that was encouraging. And that they intend to continue those meetings. And then I also appreciated how he. Talked about how there would be beds available, just not the traditional inpatient beds, but you know, bringing up like sobering center type beds or, you know, other crisis beds, so. And I do want to learn more about that model in Orange County that they kept bringing up as a possible. Example of what we might create here, so those are the main takeaways I had from that meeting. You're muted again, Bill.
That discussion wasn't captured in the city's release on it. And so I just, I I want to add that it wasn't.
Yeah, I listened to like the second half of the meeting.
Well, it all seems to be going in the right direction. It is a shame about the psych beds. I thought the article in the paper was very good about how it really pointed out that issue. And I think it is a terrible wasted opportunity. And I don't feel that the rationale for not providing them was ever. Particularly well. Documented or argued, but. I think to the extent that we can get this Behavioral Health Center and get extra funding for it, that will be a huge positive addition. And to the extent that I think also that we can get some increased dollars for the Human Services Grant Budget. I think that's equally important. Because continuing to fund these services at the level they are will be. Simply putting the city in the same situation that it's been in for the last few years of being blamed for not addressing very real problems. So, anyway, going through the list of our other ad hocks. Is there anything else that anyone wants to speak to? I think. Brian, you had said there was something that you wanted to to share regarding. Universal Basic Income.
Oh, yeah, so who's on this committee? Commissioners Perrin and Menville. Menville, I have. A possible meeting with the city's Preserver Diversity Program for an update. I'll send you guys some times that they're available. And also I connected with the county. The county is actually launching their own UBI program in Santa Monica has two zip codes within it. The UBI program. The application starts on the 31st of, I think it just started. It's starting, let me double check. It's starting very, very soon. So there will be potential for Santa Monicans to apply and receive UBI from the county. And the head of the county's UBI program has has agreed to come to the next commission meeting to report on the program. And to discuss goals of the program, which is kind of exciting.
Excellent. So we'll add that then to our agenda for the April meeting. And is there anything else that, moving on to future agenda items, is there anything else that anybody wants to add to a future agenda? Okay, well, if something comes up in the next two weeks. Please feel free to send that out. We can share it with the other commissioners. Is there anything else that? Anyone would like to to speak to tonight?
Just wanted to see if it was possible to join the UBI. Ad hoc, or if you, I don't know if there's a limit to how many people can be on an ad hoc.
I think there are three. I believe, is that correct?
We have, yeah, we have three currently.
Oh, oh, okay. Yes, you have Stetch, Roud, Parent and Mandl. Sorry, okay.
No, 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 if and if there's another ad hoc that only has two, I will, I'll join that one.
Well.
Our ad hoc only has two.
Which one?
The one on alternative shelters.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sloan, you're going to attend the Cradle to Career meeting on Thursday?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. Could we report on that in April? And all right, well, if there's nothing more, I think we can adjourn. Appreciate everybody's time.
I want to make, can I make one observation?
Commissioner Parent.
That has, it's it's not really, there is a future of commissions and. We haven't done anything on on that, but I want to make the the observation that right now for the city, I think there are. Five applicants. five applicants for the commission on women. I think there's four for seniors and there's zero for the Social Services Commission, which is supposed to be the commission, the umbrella commission for all of those, for, for those things. So before June, I don't know if anybody's still here from the city. I don't think so. Anybody from the city? Liz, did you leave? The, uh, but it's really unclear how that's going to shake out. I heard some, the mention of the Human Services Commission tonight. So there may be a discussion in City Hall about all of this that we don't know about.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that if, if this commission is going to sunset in June, that they will want it to be starting to recruit in April. So certainly encourage people to continue to participate. I think my tenure comes to an end this June. So it'll be, it will have been five or six years. That seems like a good don't let the, don't let the door hit you on the way out. As this commission that I've led gets demolished. So whatever. I think we've made some, I think we've played a good role and feel good about everything that we've been able to accomplish. So hopefully the big win will be is if they increase the amount of money for the Human Services Grants Program. If they don't, I feel sorry for whoever is on the Human Services Commission because people will be very unhappy about the lack of city services. I mean, when you think about it, that's kind of the essence of what this commission is all about. You know, helping the council deal with that reality. That the, the services in the city for so many of our citizens is just, are just not not adequate. Anyway, don't mean to end this on a downer. I thought this was a good meeting and really appreciate everybody taking part and appreciate the community engagement. And I hope that people on this call will, will consider signing up to become commissioners for the new Human Services Commission. We, we really need, I think, people who are, who are dedicated and committed to to, to supporting so many of our members of our community. So anything, anything more anybody else wants to say?
I'd just like to say thank you to the interpreters. It was really nice to have you adding, you're adding to our meeting. It's really great to have you here. Thank you for your services.
I'm glad you said that. Yes, agreed.
I just wanted to thank you all, especially for hammering in that the budget needs to be increased if, you know, where people in the community are going to get adequate services. So thank you all for your service, especially Winnie, since your time is coming to an end, unfortunately. Thank you.
Maybe I'll be able to help in other ways. Never know. But thanks. Anyway, thanks to everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.